Okay, John Wurts here, Montgomery County 2 Party. I'm here with Tom Crumman and he is running for the City of Montgomery, City Council, House 5. All right? That's with him. Good. Appreciate you coming tonight. With me is Del Fessenden, James Pyners, David Smith, and Larry Rogers. So as we talked about Tom, first of all, again, welcome. Thanks for coming out. We'll start off with you up to a five-minute opening.
Okay.
And then we'll just go around the table, ask some questions. You have up to two minutes to answer each question. And we'll just, like I said, go around the table until we run out of questions or time.
Okay.
And we'll let you know about that. So why don't we start off with your opening?
Okay.
And then we'll go from there.
My name is Tom Crumman. I have been a businessman in Montgomery for about seven years. I own a popular restaurant there. I've been somewhat active in the city, never really politically. I used to attend City Council quite a bit. One reason I am running, actually two reasons. There was a position that became available. A current councilman told me, gave me a heads-up on it. And so, I did some politicking, talked to three of the five City Council people, told them I was interested, and I was appointed. Now, that was in December. And the reason I wanted to be appointed and subsequently run is because, a while back, there was a police chief who was extremely popular, very, very well-qualified, former Secret Service, just very, very sharp. And everybody in the, not everybody, but a lot of people really appreciated the job he did and the profession that he brought to the Chief of Police position. But a couple of current Council people decided that they just didn't like him. There was a personality conflict, so they took it upon themselves to run him off. And they told him that if, no matter what, they're just gonna give him a bad time, he doesn't have to quit, he can retire already. Subsequently, that's what he did. But, so I didn't really appreciate how it was handled. It was not handled before Council. It was just, I don't know if there was any illegalese or toll of violations or anything like that, but I really started thinking wrong and hard that we need to make a change. There are several Council people currently that I have the utmost respect for. But being a very conservative person, and Montgomery's relatively conservative, I think there's a lot of direction that I can assist in, leadership, things of that nature, because we have serious problems in Will, in the next few years, with mobility and traffic. Because we get 16,000 cars a day on State Highway 105. Of those cars, there are also trucks, lot trucks, big trucks. I don't know what they're carrying, but we just have a real traffic problem in Montgomery. We also have a problem with growth, and I think that I would love to assist, again, in the management of just smart, efficient growth. We're gonna grow no matter what. We don't have a choice. We've got a lot of large stores, we've been there at Kroger, we have CVS, a lot of the chains. And I think if it's well-managed, efficiently, and effectively, I think that the growth can be managed. Fiscally, Montgomery, their finances are in very good shape. I did a lot of checking to answer the questionnaire and couldn't find that we had any outstanding bonds, so, which made me feel good. But other than that, I just wanna help Montgomery, help the people of Montgomery, who are a lot of them my friends, make sure that we transition to a, you know, just a well-run, smooth-run government. There's two factions right now, and we need to try to overcome that and get back to where people realize that we have to provide customer service for the taxpayer and not get into axes-to-grind or political infighting or things of that nature. I wanna run just to really help the little city that I've kinda grown to love over the last 15 years I've lived in the area, I've lived in the city for the last eight. But it's four square miles, only 1,000 people live there, so I've got my work cut out. I've got a lot of doors to knock on. I'm well-known in the town, hopefully I'm respected, but I'm gonna do what's right.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So, why this, you kinda gave me an idea of why you're running, or gave us an idea of why you're running. Why this particular position, House 5? Is it, are they distributed, or are they at-large positions, or give me some background?
It's all at-large. There's five positions, of course, and it was really glowing in truth. It was a seat that was going to be appointed, and knowing everybody on Council, I just, as I mentioned earlier, met with each one, we had a cup of coffee, full of my interests, you know, what I felt. Three of them said that they appreciated that I was a downtown businessman, because they'd never had somebody on Council that operates a business in downtown Montgomery. Everybody always works in the woodlands or out, so I think that was one reason that several of them wanted me to be active on Council.
Okay. What are the sources of your political insights? Just friends, or things that you read, or research that you do, or what?
I get on my mutual internet. I start out with Breitbart. I have four or five Fox News, The Gateway Pundit. I have four or five things I read completely every morning, and I think that gives me the perspective on what's going on and my beliefs. I'm 63-years-old and I've been a lifelong Republican. I'm a staunch conservative, I'm a fiscal conservative. I believe in, you know, certainly in small government. But that's where I get my news primarily. I don't watch network TV. I just don't believe in a lot of that stuff. I'm a big Trump supporter. And most of the time, I don't really get a lot, except maybe Fox News on TV, but the rest, I read it online.
What's your source of local news for the Montgomery area, the Council position you're running for?
There's a local paper, I think it's called Montgomery News. I know the publisher. He drops off eight or 10 at the restaurant every week. And so I go through that, or I'll pick one up at City Hall. But it's really, you know, it's very little political information in there, except that the gentleman that you mentioned, Mr. Wilkus, he writes an article, and I never read it. But most of mine is, I get it nationally, I'll look at it on the Conroe Courier for the local news, again, online.
Okay. And probably customers in your business.
Exactly. And I talk to a lot of people, and it's funny, because there are so many people that I know, and they know how I feel about politics, and you know, what's the old adage, you know, don't talk politics in religion, but I'd say 85% of our regulars are conservatives, Republicans if not very conservative. So, those are people that I socialize with, and it's really just, probably most of my customers have become extremely close friends.
Okay. James?
Well, I'd like to explain for anybody watching, the fact that the City Council is elected and the Mayor is elected. So, what is the division of responsibilities for you as a City Council member versus the Mayor? Who's responsible for doing what? And if there's a conflict, how is that gonna get resolved?
Well, it's funny, because a good friend of mine who's on City Council took me aside when I first told him I was interested. And he said, "Tom, the Mayor doesn't realize that she has very little power. She can break a tie, and that's it." The people that make the decisions for this city going forward are five City Council people. So, it's very rare that we don't have a, you know, we usually have four, most of the time, five, but we don't have a former servant who can't meet, can't vote, or take any action. And so, it's funny, this weekend, we did some interviews for police chiefs, and there were some very qualified people. And when it came to voting for who was going to, we wanted to select, there wasn't a tie. It was very strong towards a few of the candidates, so the Mayor didn't have a vote.
All right, David. So, you talk about all the growth in Montgomery City, but it has a small ex-territorial jurisdiction zone.
Correct.
You kinda got the gallop coming over from Conroe to Inserville here. So, how, what's your view of what Montgomery City looks like in 20 years?
You know, it's funny, because certainly the biggest sales tax remitter, close to Montgomery, within two miles is Walmart. But Conroe annexed that several years ago. So, I think what we are doing as a city, we're not actively trying to go out and annex. You know, if there's an ETJ, it makes sense. If there's, I don't think we have any muds in the city right now. You know, that's certainly a consideration. There's nothing out there. But I guess just make sure that the growth is smart and intelligent, and don't annex for the sake of annexing. They have annexed some properties in the past six months before I came onboard, but it was all things that were, you know, within, just right next to Montgomery. I think that we're kind of of the opinion, you know, Conroe's big, and if they wanna, we're not gonna let them approach, but we may let them just have some of this stuff that we're not gonna fight them for. We're a small town, we're the home of the Texas flag, the Lone Star flag. We're very proud of that fact. And, you know, I'm still relatively new, so there's a lot that I don't know about. You know, I don't think I can answer your question intelligently. Hit me up in six months, 'cause I'm gonna, I'll be doing my homework.
So, you've been in the restaurant business in Montgomery for seven years?
Correct.
Oh. Why, and first of all, what did you do before, and what, this is the age you ended up in, the restaurant?
Previous to that, I worked for, I was on contract with a company called Graceland Rural Buildings. My job was Regional Manager, and I set up different lots to sell rural buildings throughout each part of East Texas, both more South Texas and Southeast Louisiana. So, it was a very, it was a very, very good job. I made really good money, and I always envisioned that I wanted to have my own little wine bar. And so, I actually leased some property across from April Sound, while I'm still working, and come to find out, TFC came in and said, "Everything looks great, but you need two bathrooms." And I said, "Well, I'm not gonna put another bathroom in, 'cause it's only 1,000 square feet." Fortunately, I don't know, I always think of these things, but I had a contingency, that if I didn't get a TFC permit, I could walk. So, to answer your question, I lived in Montgomery, there was a little wine bar downtown, met the owner of that, and we started getting to know each other. He called me one day and said, "Tom, there's a place across the street that's getting ready to go on the market, you may wanna look at it." And I said, "Billy, it's a restaurant. I just want a little wine bar." And then I got to thinking, "Well, it doesn't cost anything to go, you know, have a Realtor go in there." I went and looked at it and became interested, made a deal. I'd never really been in the restaurant business before, but I did learn if you hire white people and you keep a good eye on them. And we were successful from day one. It's been profitable since day one. I firmly believe, if you wanna be in the restaurant business, it's a tough business, but own the real estate. That way you control your own destiny. You're not at the mercy of the landlord, that raises rents and, you know, triple net. But so, you know, to answer your question, that was what I did for the past six years. I bought fruit oil, I own my oil and gas production myself, I've sold pipe. But about half my career before I did the Graceland Rural Buildings, I did, I was with a large packaging distributor, and they moved me all over the West, Denver, Phoenix, San Francisco, and ultimately, I ended up in Houston.
So, you owned a wine bar, but you wound up with the restaurant?
Exactly.
You had wine?
Exactly. It was, you know, there was a piece of real estate here, and I thought, and she, unfortunately, the lady that owned it, bought the restaurant, always wanted to be in the restaurant business. Everybody, for some stupid reason, wants to be in the restaurant business. They have a good barbecue recipe. Well, she bought it, and unfortunately, her husband, who had retired as a civil engineer, died within 60 days of pancreatic cancer. So, I kinda pay over that in a sense, but it's been really good. It's kinda my full-time job.
Okay. Shifting gears a little bit, under the general categories, there was a question, the second question is, what are the three largest challenges facing this position office in your remit? To address them, and you said the first one is traffic and mobility.
Correct.
Which you talked about in your opening too. What is the status of Lone Star Parkway? The last time I drove on that northwest side, that was a disaster. I mean, that was like a road from, out of the Spacemakers area back in the 1800s, and somebody made a bunch of money off of that.
Oh.
And Montgomery's gonna pay for it, I think.
Yeah, that's, there are several large landlords out there. I think they're kinda waiting to see what's gonna happen. There's a lot of talk about doing, making it more of an industrial corridor. The city itself is wanting to work with Tech Dot to divert the big trucks on Lone Star that were running in the end by the high school, to get around downtown. Because we get large trucks, and these aren't just semis, these are massive carriers where they, you actually have, they have to get off, hold up the wires, so they don't clip the wires. Lots of white load, lots of escorts, and these aren't just typical white loads. So, they're trying to divert it, because it really messes with the traffic. But to answer your question, I know there was an issue there recently. We just zoned a small apartment complex. And a lot of the people out there would rather have single-family or multifamily than some sort of industrial, because industrial or commercial. Most of it is owned industrial and commercial, because industrial, you don't know what you get. You could get a, you know, somebody that saw his law 24 hours a day. You can get somebody that works on cars. I mean, all these different industries that we don't really feel are beneficial to Montgomery per se, in the historic district especially. So, we're trying to maintain the aesthetic appeal and the historicness, and hopefully fix up some of the things downtown, draw more people downtown, and have, you know, family events, entertainment, cultural events. So, but Lone Star, it's still kinda out there. There are several big property owners out there, and I think they're kinda putting their heads together to decide what they wanna do with their property.
'Cause that's a disaster. If you put a big truck, big trucks on there and murder from 105, that thing would just come apart. I mean, this feels bad.
It is. It is. I mean, we learned that with the bridge that was recently, I guess, one of the developers assigned it to the city, and within a month or two, it just, it fell apart.
Is that on the east side, kinda northeast?
Yes, yes. About both sides. Took two years, two, two-and-a-half years to repair that. FEMA gave us money, but we couldn't have done it alone. It was $350,000.
Okay. Thanks, Del. What city services are most in need of attention or improvement?
Definitely sewage. With our growth, the two sewage, well, we have one sewage plant, we have two water plants. And we need to, you know, the sewage plant is, it's not at capacity yet, but we have a lot of the, we've got Chick-fil-A coming in, we have, you know, all these popular fast food. But with the growth there, it's really, it's gonna be putting a burden on the sewage plant within another, I'm gonna say, year and a half. And so, we've got a, now, we're starting to decide if we're gonna put a second sewage plant. Likewise, with water. So, I think those two are probably the most critical infrastructure items that need to be addressed within the next year and a half to two years.
Okay. Okay. So, I'm not familiar with the distribution funding, talking about the roadway earlier, the parkway, so forth. How are those improvements gonna be paid for?
The improvements? Right now, I don't, there are, you know, they're looking into some federal grants, some state grants, and then we do have, you know, in the general fund, there's certainly not enough money yet, but what they're trying to attract more than anything else is single-family homes. In nice developments, not starter homes, they want larger homes, and hopefully, you know, generate some revenue from, you know, the impact fees and some of the other fees associated with development. You know, the, we've addressed it lightly, again, I haven't been onboard that long. When I say lightly, it hasn't, we haven't gotten real detailed, but the next budget that's coming out, I believe it's in July, I'll start preparing for it and present it. There's gonna be some hard numbers in there, and with some determination where the money's gonna come from for the infrastructure.
There's usually Tech Dot, those are partnerships, local.
Well, exactly. I think it's matching, or, I don't know, matching to a certain extent, but yes, absolutely.
James?
Now, who is the county commissioner for your city? Which precinct?
Let's see, it's, GM, James, it's Mayor, James, Mike Mayor, I'm sorry. Mike Mayor. Not James, Mike Mayor. They get nowhere.
Well, there's a lot of talk about traffic that you just had, so I guess my question is, does the city, does the city have, or is it going to, or do you want the city to develop a mobility plan? And what is a good way to get around the fact that your county commissioner has just totally failed in any effort to develop a mobility plan, so that your area can receive state funding for the business road, you wanna try, that sort of thing? What will you plan? What will you do? What do you think you should do as a City Councilman regarding mobility?
Couple things. Number one, be patient, hope somebody qualified runs against you. I hear all the time that I have a property out in, let me answer, I get a letter from, which is right outside of Montgomery, from HOA, "If you need your ditch built in, call my manager's office, they'll come out and do it." I know the City Council, we've talked about, "If you need this, call his office." But to answer your question, I don't know to what extent we've got cooperation from him. I was hoping we could come up, you know, work with Tech Dot for the next several years. Right now, they're looking to widen 149. That impacts me.
Tech, Tech Dot, yeah.
Yes, and that impacts me dramatically, because I have property there, and I've heard through the rumor mill, and then finally confirmed, no, that's not true, that they were gonna widen the road right up to where I have stone flower beds on the outside of my apartment. Well, that was bad information. But so, really, you know, the best thing is to make contact with people that, and departments that are gonna work with us on a long-term plan, and I don't know when that position is up, but I know that, I'm not aware of how the county judge, county commissioner's office operates, but if I am re-elected, I plan to make a point to meet those people one-on-one.
All right. Quick question. As a City Council, of course, I would think you'd want to attract new residents, new businesses, new customers to your city.
Correct.
What do you think is, should be the City Council's role, or what should they do to do that attraction? Any amenities, that sort of thing, using tax dollars?
Well, I'm also on the, currently, they're asking two City Council people on the Economic Development Corporation. So, my push is to do a downtown beautification project with the sales tax revenue that's remitted to the city, also with Tech Dot grants. They, we were able to convince Tech Dot to make, widen their project from 105 to Caroline, which is a street right before my restaurant, and then about another two blocks down and onward, because we want to do a comprehensive plan for the downtown historic area, and again, do it smart. Tech Dot had a plan, they didn't talk to any of the downtown businesses. They met with the president, the director of the Chamber of Commerce, and she had a lot of bad information. And so, finally, when we realized Tech Dot was serious about going forward, none of the members, the business owners downtown are members of the Chamber because of politics. But so, we did get them through, well, Metcap's office to hold off that piece of downtown. My idea is to, there's another street block over called McCown, gets a little bit of traffic, but not a whole lot. I wanna make that an pedestrian mall. I wanna put planners in there. I wanna have, and I've talked to other folks about this, but my idea is to get, you know, have cultural events down there, whether it's an art show, family events. Right now, we are doing something, doesn't call whether they held up, but they do movies for the kids once a month at the community center, outside, and popcorn and things like that. It's free. Also, we have right now four festivals, but the city, and myself included, wants to have a lot more, at least maybe one a month. But just things to continue to give people a reason to get downtown. I've owned that business for seven years, to be quite honest. I'd never been downtown until a year previous, and I lived four miles away on that Conroe for the past 15. I never had a reason, and I didn't know a lot about downtown in the historic district. So, I think we really need to dress it up, make it impressive, so families and a lot of people. The Downtown Business Association is starting to get some things. They do what they call a sit-and-stroll in conjunction with Fire Restaurant. People get a glass of wine, walk around with vendors, walk around to downtown, and it's legal. But just really give people a reason, a fun reason, come downtown and enjoy themselves for a few hours.
Thank you.
You lost, Tom.
This is kinda part question and part informational. So, we've talked about the mobility plan for the city, but, you know, there's a regional transportation council.
Okay.
Council government's located downtown, and they funnel $300 million a year of federal and state money.
Okay.
And, you know, to give you an example, like bicycle paths.
Okay.
There's federal and state money available for bicycle paths, but you have to get in line.
Okay.
So, your representative is Commissioner Byrd.
Okay.
He's our representative for you in Montgomery County, because there's only, there's only two seats, his seat and Conroe.
Okay.
So, do you see a bigger role? I mean, you're obviously concerned about transportation, and vehicles are a transportation council. If it's not on the transportation council plan, it doesn't get funded. So, all the Tech Dot grants, you won't have them.
Correct.
If they're not on the regional plan, they don't get funded.
Okay.
So, you have to start talking to Byrd.
You know, bicycles, we mentioned that. I think that'd be a lot of fun. I've, in that, I've traveled, you know, once a year on vacation, recently went to South Beach in Miami. It was cool, it was really cool. But they have a cool thing, you could rent a bike, you put a credit card in there, and you can ride around wherever you wanna go, within reason, 'cause you go too far, it stops. But things like that, or maybe, you know, we've even talked about just informally amongst ourselves, different citizens, and things like that, maybe the city have a little bike rental program, or for free, where you can literally take a bike, and again, it's controlled, you can't leave too far. But we need a lot of sidewalks, and we need a lot of, I think, bike paths.
So, there's a subcommittee for pedestrian movement.
Okay.
In the Transportation Council, and they're always looking for people to serve in the council, and that way you have insight into what they're doing.
And this is the regional, you said, regional council?
It's the Houston-Gowson Area Management, Regional Transportation Council.
HST.
HST, and they have sub-organizations for pedestrian movement, which is exactly what you said, to fund the bike, you know, the bicycles, to fund the road improvements to allow bicycles to travel getting by over.
Okay.
And they have a pot of money in, to be honest, it's in the hundreds of millions of dollars.
We're just starting, we had somebody from A&amp;M, I mean, they're working with the city and the citizens, getting input, and he kept mentioning that in his presentation the other day, that organization. But, so we're trying to start doing some informal planning and revitalization ideas and things like that, so maybe I'll approach in first. So maybe I'll approach him first, because they seem to be very wired in, and I know A&amp;M also has a transportation.
That's all the council.
Okay.
Okay, we're at, we've got about 15 minutes. Let's see, on the budget, we've voted an increase review saying on city budget why I would change the way you propose on your city budget, why you've mentioned that we currently have two issues where others want to add staff just because. Can you tell me, can you extrapolate on that a little bit?
Sure, wouldn't be nepotism, would it?
More like promises made, commitments made, that they weren't qualified to do that. But nonetheless, to answer that, they, of a small faction wants to add a city engineer. Right now, we have a contract engineering firm, Jones and Carter. They do a good job, an effective job, but the problem is they are not managed. What I personally am hoping to do is not have it managed by a city engineer. I don't think we can justify another position right now. I would hope that our new city administrator, who's going to retire soon, but the new one that we get has the capabilities to manage the contract engineer. And I'll give you an example, I mentioned the bridge. They managed that project for several years, finally got it done, and then brought us a bill for $35,000 that was not in the contract. So I'm not sure, I'm sorry?
The bridge?
No. I can proudly say I was the one that made the motion to deny it. The engineering firm, needless to say, is not happy with me, but it was unanimous. Because the bill, you know, it was budgeted at 320, that made it like 355. And we don't have that money. I think in the past, if someone hadn't spoke up, because I said, what are they going to do if we don't pay them? Nobody could answer that. So I told myself, well, let's try and see. So it was denied, and it's too bad, you should have made sure they stuck close to the budget. That's our money, that's a taxpayer's money. That's not the engineering firm's money.
And so that's one issue we said.
The other one, again, some, I believe people made commitments, I can't get anybody to admit to it. And then there's just a couple, when I say people. But the gentleman who I replaced resigned so he could take a position with the city as the assistant to the city administrator. And I made sure when I came on board, his title is not assistant, but city administrator, is the assistant too. I get the impression he was promised the position when the current city administrator retires, but it's not going to happen.
Okay, and there's some discussion, or, I don't live in Montgomery, so pardon my unfamiliarity. But what is the mayor's salary, what is the city council's salary? What are the time commitments that are retired or expected?
The mayor and city council are paid zero. The time commitments are really whatever you're willing to invest timelines. I do a lot of homework, and then I make sure when I go to council or MEDC that I'm prepared. Other folks get a little too involved with the personnel issues in the police department, with making decisions for, you know, other entities like MEDC without bringing it as an action item. I just read about recently, we got that fixed. So there are several individuals, several being two, that like to get very, very involved, more involved than they should, in personnel issues, which that goes in, that's a closed session issue. They have been making personnel promises to certain individual, again, that's a closed session issue.
And you're doing this in open meetings?
No, they're doing this with, by going to city hall and sitting down with the administrator and chit-chatting and making sure that there's, if they don't have a quorum, because there's only two, there's not three. They're careful about it, they're very careful about it. But so I, because I had some, exchanged emails, kind of heated emails with the administrator the other day. And he said, well, you're not as involved in some of the others. And I said, you're correct, and I'm not going to be, because they're butting into things that don't pertain to them. And we're going to put a stop to it, because the other info sessions, we discussed it, you know, with the other city council members. And they're really disappointed how some of these, the direction these things seem to take, and they hit their hands slapped, but they do it anyway.
So what was the, excuse me, but your question was, what did the city administrator make?
No, I asked about mayor and council. They made nothing.
I couldn't, I couldn't divulge what the city administrator makes anyway, because it's a contract that was decided in a closed session.
Really? That's not public?
Not to my knowledge. We had a contract with him, a short-term contract. Because he's going to, again, be retiring, not to my knowledge, I tried to find out before, and it's discussed again in closed sessions, so it's something. Anything that's discussed in closed session, I believe, is certainly not public. Because it is a personnel issue, so that is one of, I think, three items that can be discussed in a closed session. Personnel, legal, and one other, I'm not, that's a couple of mine.
What's salary too?
Um.
As personnel?
Yeah, as personnel, and personnel issues are just among the city council and the city attorney.
Legal?
That's.
Real estate?
There it is.
And employees, all can be closed session. Interesting, because I thought I had that, anyway, there's a. They're.
So you, we talked a lot about transportation.
Okay.
And you talked a lot about tax-dot. And do you see an effective working relationship with tax-dot, or do you feel like?
No, I see an effective working relationship with tax-dot, because it used to be them against us. When I say us, it was the downtown business owner. And we didn't realize the, you know, that they were, they were just as out in the cold, basically, as we were. Because they had contacted the executive director of the chamber, said, here's what we want to do in downtown. And she said, well, we need this, we need these pretty plants, we need sidewalks. We already have most, a lot of sidewalks, but she gave them everything, her grocery list, without talking to any of the businesses who have a lot better idea than she does. So at first, it was at the cereal with tax-dot, we had meetings at the community center, they came, they had their dog and pony show. But we got an opportunity after their dog and pony show to talk to them one-on-one. And I think there was three representatives, that was two years ago. And so they, we told them our concerns, the business people, and they said, wait a minute. We had no idea. We thought that she had the blessing of the downtown business people. And because of politics, nobody has joined the chamber down, the downtown historic area. So, but yes, we have a lot better working relationship, and a good friend of mine that comes to the restaurant a lot, and I've known him for a few years as Will Metcalf. So when I, if I had an issue, you know, with tax-dot, initially, what I did was just pick up the phone and say, hey, can you get with your contacts there, make sure this is all, excuse me, this ain't raining, is it? It was raining? Because I had, I hear it through my hearing, but so initially, I went through well to build a bridge with tax-dot. But we're at the point now, the city has a good working relationship.
How about FEMA with the flood? How do you think the council handled that, and how would you do it differently?
Really, you know, we were really fortunate, because Montgomery had literally no flooding. I bought a home on the Friday of Harvey, a new home downtown, what, I'm sorry, a 20-story old home downtown. I had no issues. I couldn't move for nine days because of the rain. But really, in our little four square miles, we didn't have any flooding. The only issue that FEMA got involved in was the bridge that was damaged, that wasn't, you know, made, produced properly.
Was that water, not water damage, that was just construction?
Yeah, it was construction, it was core construction.
Who, okay. In our budget section, it says, what is the current budget surplus? And should any of this be returned to the residents, pay down debt, or retain in rainy day fund? Or if so, how much and why? Your answer was currently, the city does not anticipate a surplus and anticipates a negative $110,000 that will be made up by inter-fund transfers, bringing the balance to zero. I was not involved in the preparation and analysis of the current 2019 budget. Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure. The, you know, to answer, you want me to answer that question, or just elaborate on that?
Yeah.
Okay. You know, fiscally, I'm very conservative. I'm not big on rainy day funds, because I think that's the taxpayer's money, and the state has a massive rainy day fund. I think in a case like that, if it's not earmarked for something, infrastructure, or, you know, an immediate need to repair infrastructure, something like that, then I see they'll probably return it to the taxpayer. But again, it has to be that intelligently, and not just say, oh, we've got a balance, let's give it back. And it's not, we've got a balance, how can we spend it? It's what are we looking at in the next 60 days? And, you know, again, I haven't been there long enough to know, to really have my arm through all the budget, because I was not involved in repairing it last year. But that's just what I took from the current budget, you know, that I could.
I guess what I'm having a hard time understanding is, is that you're not anticipating a surplus and anticipates $110,000, that that's going to be made up through, could you explain inter-fund transfer?
Okay, basically, the city has all these, I guess we'll call them savings account, through the state, or they're managed by different entities, you know, not affiliated with the city, and we make interest on it. And I think what it looked like was getting tight, because the budget, again, I believe it's July, but it looks like. And we have, right now, we don't have a problem. That's just an anticipation at the end of the fiscal year.
So that would kind of, you're saying?
Exactly, exactly.
Would you consider, so we got 10 minutes. Would you consider tax abatements to incentivize companies to come to Montgomery? Or do you think that the city is attractive enough to get companies there without having to do that? It seems like a township, I mean, it's almost landlocked now, and they still want to, you know, give away money and tax abatements to companies, and so what, but Montgomery's a little further out. And competing against the Welces and Magnolias and that sort of thing. What's your?
I think tax abatements are more to the future for potential tax revenue. And if a company wants to move to Montgomery, then certainly make it as attractive as you can and don't buy their business. One thing I really, as it stands.
What does that mean?
Well, as it stands right now, we have a very, I guess, a higher per capita income than a lot of cities our size. And we recently got a groger that opened about a year ago, and they will give a tax abatements. As a result of that, the mayor, we saw, he was very upset about it. But then we now have HEB that is on property across the street for some time. They anticipate starting to, probably great, great ground within a year, and they said, we have no intention of coming with our hat in. And so I'm not big on gifts, on tax payments. Being on the Montgomery Economic Development Corporation, we're always having these different festivals. Generally, generally, it's nonprofits coming to us with their hand out and saying, can we have $10,000 from, you know, our portion of the tax, sales tax revenue for our festival? And so they finally got smart, again, before my time, and said, you know what? For the first five years, we'll kind of see, after that, don't even think about it. So we, they did recently approve, and this is my first meeting, a $10,000 check to help fund a festival in April. This was a month and a half ago. I did say, you know what, you guys do what you want out here, but I guarantee you, you can't put a festival together in three months. So it just came to me recently, it hasn't been voted on, but it was decided by people that are on the MEDC. Let's go ahead and cancel that festival, we don't have any traction, we don't have any sponsors. So, but I am not big on using taxpayer money to convince industries or businesses to relocate, or locate, or open a new business. Because all of our little businesses downtown, we have our own town, you know. Use that money for something that can be better spent. Another example, my, a year and a half before, I came on board, I had a large parking lot next to my business, but it was mostly gravel. I made, the city administrator approached me and said, Tom, the city's thinking about buying that. You only own half of it. I said, that's great, Jack, but that's a poor investment. Downtown parking is at a premium, there's no downtown parking for just public parking. And so I tell you what, let me think about it, and I went to MEDC and I said, I will buy the other lot, and I'll make a deal with you. I'll give you a 20-year lease for downtown, for parking, for public parking, if you'll pay it. They went to MEDC and convinced MEDC to spend the money to pay it. They now have a downtown parking lot. I own the real estate, but there's signs that say, public parking. I have to find, you know, allow my customers to park there, and public parking to park there. So I just didn't think it was a good use of taxpayer dollars to buy a lease of real estate and go into the real estate business, basically.
Okay, let's see, question a little down. You are effectively the incumbent, even only recently so, so why did somebody choose to run against you?
So right now, there, I mentioned earlier, there's a faction. Montgomery has, every other year, of course, next year will be the mayor, two council people that are elected. This year, three seats are open, one incumbent that's been there a long time doesn't have to be challenging him. But lo and behold, two of the individuals I spoke with earlier are really good at getting that you don't agree with them. They're good at recruiting neighbors or warm bodies. And so last minute, they recruited one to challenge, somebody that's been there quite a while, but he doesn't say a lot, so I think they thought he was kind of a weak link. And I'm the new guy, and I think they think that I'm temporary, so they convinced somebody to run against me. Of course, they both filed on the day that it was required, about 4:00 PM that day. I filed a month and a half earlier, I had the advantage in a sense, because we had a pick ballots, we were placed on the ballot. There was two of us, and I'm the number one position, I think that may help a little bit. But to answer your question, this faction is good at recruiting, they're like, coming. And so far, they haven't been able to get anybody on council yet.
Well, I see that the city was chartered, I think it was 1835, or 1837.
Seven, 37, as it's written, posted.
And while the county has, since 2000, doubled in growth, the city of, your city, Montgomery, has also doubled in growth to, I think, 700 now.
Okay.
And you mentioned about the ETJ. Are there any plans or desires to basically expand the city, and what are they?
I believe there are plans to expand the city. We have some folks that don't want any growth, I mentioned earlier, that's not going to happen. There's going to be growth, whether you want it or not. So they, they have not targeted anything that I'm aware of right now. Recently, they did complete some annexations, but it was little, I think, just small pieces of real estate.
Residences or just business?
Uh, raw land.
Oh.
Within, you know, in the ETJ, I think they did that more as a defensive move against Conroe, it was commercial property. So there was one right. Conroe. It was commercial property. So there was one right behind Pizza Shack, a new restaurant that's been there for a long time, the third building, and between that and that elementary school. So what they were trying to do, because there's a large apartment complex across the street that Conroe has annexed, and it makes sense, it's directly across the street, but they did annex that. So I think they're doing it intelligently and not just for the sake of annexing, to do annex. But I don't know anything on the books right now that they're looking to in the future do that. I think there is talk that they want to do it intelligently and make sure. They don't care about what the Conroe's feelings, but don't do it, and they have to worry about what they're going to do with it later.
One of the largest revenues, the sales tax or property tax. And so what is the sales tax revenue for the city in a year? And how much of that is spent on your police, fire, what services?
Oh, let's see.
In general?
I believe we have a budget of around a million one.
And what size is the police force line?
What size is it? We have ten officers, actually eight right now, and they anticipate two more. I believe their budget is around three hundred thousand. The tax, sales tax revenue, this is a rough number, I think is around seven hundred and thirty-five, forty thousand, something like that. And the rest is, you know, sewer, water, things of that nature, and some other revenue-reusing items that don't come in mind. But I know our overall budget is around a million this year.
So is there ever any discussion of un-incorporating, like Chateau Woodstead?
No, I'm not, certainly not that I'm aware of. And I, quite honestly, I don't know the advantages or disadvantages to doing something like that.
Well, like the Woodlands, they don't have to pay for a full-time police chief, or staff, or administrator. There's a lot of things that they partner with the county and the sheriff to do, but definitely they know it's going to cost revenue to.
Does the sheriff's department have a precinct office in the Woodland?
Yes.
Okay.
And they pay for so many salaries of the deputies.
Okay. Because that's.
More than three hundred thousand.
It's not something we looked into. I know there is somebody on council that wants to do away with the police force and just have these constables in the sheriff's department.
Interesting. Just thank you.
All right. So this is the time where we wrap it up, and you have up to five minutes.
Okay.
Appreciate you coming in.
Certainly. I think I, you know, kind of said what I feel and think. But the city, the way I look at it, I think that the city really needs, well, we, so Montgomery has a lot of challenges. And when I look at challenges, several years ago, I had a guy that worked for me at the top. We've got a problem. And I said, no, we don't have a problem. We have a challenge. And if you've got a challenge, bring me a solution before you do something with my life. So there's a lot of challenges and there's a lot of opportunities in the city of Montgomery. But the answer to, you know, solutions is leadership, the right kind of leadership, and like-minded people. And I'm not saying we should all be little lemons and follow each other, but be smart enough to, before you run, or even get appointed, I guess, know what you're looking at and know, look at five years down the road, and a seven, and a ten-year plan, and make sure that you know what you're talking about. And let's just not go to every council meeting and say, put this on the agenda, and, you know, let's do this. Like some of the festivals they come up with and things. They bring people to town, but they also cost, most of them operated at a negative. So, you know, hopefully that, you know, what you had asked earlier and everybody, leadership, I think, is the biggest thing that they're lacking, because some people don't like to speak out. They don't remember feelings. Right now, we have a city administrator that is a gentleman. He's semi-affective, but he's allowed himself to be corralled by two different individuals. And he's not strong enough to say, look, I was put in this position. I'm contracted to be the city administrator. Because they're always trying to tell him how to do things. So we need leadership, and we don't need people to come in that are unpaid, city council people, and try and take the city in the direction that they think it should go, one person. There's five people that were elected or selected to make those decisions for Montgomery. So that's kind of where I really think there's a lack of strong leadership. On the council, there's five people. Three, including myself, I think are very, have good potential leadership or leadership qualities, because I've been in, you know, worked for major corporations throughout my career. Two of them, one never says anything, and the other one is a housewife that has never been involved in any of this sort of project. But she has a lot of free time around here.
All right. Well, thanks for coming in.
Certainly. Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you for letting me pontificate.
You have a nice day.
I'm sorry?